Good morning. My name is Andy Krotick and welcome to the 2016 Atwater City Council Debate. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Merced County Association of Realtors. Our partners today are the Merced Sunstar, Comcast, and JD Sanders. Today's forum will be posted on the Merced Sunstar's website today, as well as broadcast on Comcast at a later date. Before I introduce our candidates, I'd like to tell you who we are. Locally, we are the Merced County Association of Realtors, about 540 strong. We're also partnered with several industry specialists, like such as title and escrow officers, termite inspectors, home inspectors, as well. We're not Republican, we're not Democrat, we're the Realtor Party. We give generously to our community. Every year, we're the Merced Salvation Army's largest contributor. We give to the Merced County Food Bank, we give to the Boys and Girls Club of Merced, and we also give to the Men's Rescue Mission. Each year, out of our own pockets, we donate between $50,000 and $70,000. We've invited you to hear today because we're interested to hear what you have to say. You see before you three candidates running for two seats. We did have a fourth candidate who declined to attend, Mr. Daniel Hernandez. I spoke to him on the phone. Mr. Hernandez is retired, but chose not to participate in our forum. Just for the audience's sake, the candidates, I've met with them all personally, and we've given them the topics we're going to be asking them, because we want them to be informed. Candidates, I'm going to, I have a timer. When you hear the timer go off, complete your sentence and please stop, but you can complete your sentence. We're going to start with opening remarks, and we've been doing this in alphabetical order, and so we'll start with you, Mr. Bergman. Please tell us why the voters should reelect you to the Atwater City Council.
Thank you, Andy. I was raised with a penchant for public service. I spent 30 years in the fire service, and it was a joy to me to do things for people and to help people. During that time, I developed an interest in politics. Working at one of the stations here in Atwater, I started getting involved and watching what happened on the city council. I didn't like what was being done and said, and I'm kind of a put up or shut up type of person, and I wasn't inclined to shut up, so I decided to run for council. I was very honored to be elected four years ago. When I was elected, the city had a $6.9 million deficit in the general fund. The last audited figures is down to $3.6 million. We won't have the audited figures for the last fiscal year for another month or so, but as it looks now, we're going to have a surplus of $800,000, which will bring it down below $3 million. I'm very proud that we've been able to do that in a short time. It didn't, the problem didn't happen overnight, and it's not going to be solved overnight, but we're making great progress. Two of the, what we call enterprise funds, our water and garbage funds, were also in a deficit. It took votes that weren't popular personally. I didn't like it myself, but I knew it had to be done. We now have brought those funds into the black. They're no longer in the red. One of the things I did that I truly believed in was term limits. I sponsored that in the city. It passed between 86% and 88% when it went to vote. It was something people wanted, and I was very proud to bring that forward. I'm the type of person who likes to finish what I started. Four years ago, we started on the road to recovery. The city was very close to bankruptcy, but I want to finish what we started. I want to get the city in the black, bring it back to the Atwater it was 15, 20 years ago, to where everybody is proud to say, "I'm from Atwater." That's my goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Mr. Creighton, the floor is yours.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Andy, and the board for having me here today. This is a nice forum. I'm Paul Creighton, a business owner and resident of Atwater. The reason I'm running for Atwater City Council is I went to my wife this summer and said, "I think it's time that we move out to the McSwain area," because I don't like the direction that Atwater is headed right now. She said, "No, I don't think so. I love the neighborhood, I love the city, and our kids love the neighborhood and love the city too." And I said, "Well, what are we going to do?" And we had a discussion, said, "Well, if we're going to stay, what can we do to make it better? This, the direction we're headed, you know, the roads are in bad shape, the parks look terrible, the city finances are bad, you know, what's the upside to this?" We've been six years, we've been talking about, you know, the debt we're in, the bankruptcy, the looming bankruptcy, the, you know, just everything negative. So I decided that, okay, if we're going to stay, I better make a difference. So I came down to City Hall, I talked to the city manager, said, "What's going on? What can I do to help?" I've got almost 20 years' experience in city government. I started as a wastewater treatment plant operator, cleaning the wastewater, operating the laboratory, and doing things out at the wastewater treatment plant for a municipality. And then I did a pretty good job at that, and they moved me up into the Water Department downtown. And I functioned there quite well, I helped them with some regulatory issues, and then they moved me into City Hall, where I became the Regulatory Compliance Coordinator for the city. After that, I was promoted up to a Public Works Director and an interim city manager. So I have extensive inside knowledge on what it takes to run municipal government, budgeting background. I ran multimillion-dollar budgets as a Public Works Director and interim city manager, and that's why I've decided to step up and help the city of Atwater, because it's worth saving.
Thank you. Mrs. Vieira.
My name's Cindy Vieira, and I'm really excited to be here today. Thank you for having me. Why am I running for city council? Because like almost everyone in this room, I'm a doer. And if you sell real estate or you're in the real estate business, you understand what that means to be a doer. None of us sit back and just wait for things to happen. Every morning, we get up and we're unemployed, until we go to work, and we take the first loan app, or we take the first call, or we show the first property. People like you, people like me, we weren't, we weren't made to just sit back and watch things happen. That's why we're successful, and that's what pushes us forward. I started involvement in my community, I think, 32 years ago, when my daughter was born. Tiny tots, slumber parties, cheer, football, baseball, snack bars, scholarship programs, sober grad, and it all goes from there. So this is a natural progression of staying involved in my community. I get up every day and go to work, and I work in the finance industry, where we're very regulated by government guidelines, and we have to learn every day how to put that round peg in that square hole. And Dorothy knows what I mean by that. They change our rules daily, and you have to figure it out, because people's lives and their happiness is on the line, and you have a certain amount of time to do that, very much like what we're doing here in city government. I don't have a lot of background sitting on a board of city government, but sometimes when we can't find our sunglasses, look on top of our head. That's where they're at the whole time. So thank you very much for having me here today, and I would appreciate your vote on November 8th.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with the first question, and again, we gave all the topics to the candidates, because we want them to be informed. Mr. Creighton, let's talk about the TEP, Transportation Expenditure Program, which will add one-half cent sales tax on Atwater residents if passed. The measure failed in 2002 and 2006. If passed, this tax would go on for 30 years, raising approximately $450 million for roads. This would be on top of the Measure H tax, which is already in place, which is another half-cent sales tax. Supporters say that Atwater will get $725,000 for roads and regional projects every year. Supporters also say this would make us what's called a self-help county, which puts us higher on the list of priorities for grants from the state of California and the federal government. On the other hand, opponents say that MCAG said if it didn't pass in 2006 and 2002, that we wouldn't have got, that we wouldn't get the mission interchange or the green sands interchange, and we got both those. Finally, other critics say that the priorities can be changed with a 45-day notice. My question to you, and the Board of Realtors has not taken a position on this at this point, but will you vote for the TEP in November?
My thoughts on the Transportation Expenditure Program, they're very straightforward. Without this plan, the insight in the near, without this plan, in the near future, we're facing decay and disrepair of our roads that are in good shape now. The city of Atwater receives close to $300,000 each year to maintain and repair our roads. That amount to maintain our roads falls short annually, and even could be taken away by the state leaders in Sacramento. If the TEP half-cent sales tax for local road passes this November, the city would receive double the funding it currently receives now, and can leverage that money as a self-help community to receive additional funding for larger projects in Atwater. Larger projects like overpass crossing to connect the north and south side of Atwater together, which will make development more attractive on both sides of the highway. I'm not a fan of any tax. However, if we are planning to develop our future, the current economic crisis that we're in, we have been plagued with over the past decade, we must take a serious approach to a, and strong resolve to solve our own problems with our own local control. We must improve our roads for aggressive development to happen, which will translate into strong job growth and strong real estate values.
Thank you. Mrs. Vieira.
I understand, well, first of all, I want to say I agree with a lot of what Mr. Creighton said, and I understand that there is a need for some additional funding in our roads department, and when you drive through the city of Atwater, it's very apparent that the need is there. The problem that I have with this is that this tax is for 30 years, so most of us in this room won't even see it finish. When Major H came, it was a little easier to swallow, because it was a 10-year tax, and so even though I know that we do need additional funding, I'm a little torn on this, simply because of the term of 30 years. So I know that there is money needed, I'm not 100% sure that this is our exact answer.
Thank you. Councilman Bergman.
Thank you, Andy. I'm against the tax for a few simple reasons. They want to add a half-cent sales tax to the citizens of Atwater. Through our Measure H, we've seen that that comes to about $1.7 million a year. The facts we were giving on city council states that the city would get approximately $600,000. So the residents are losing a whole bunch of money in my mind, given the fact that we're raising $1.7 million in the city, and we're only going to get $600. So some people say something's better than nothing, but if we, if we are in favor of this, we should pass our own transportation tax, keep that, the whole amount in the city. Why should the city residents give away their money? Why don't we keep it for ourselves and fix our roads? The roads are deplorable, there's no question about that, and I dislike taxes as much as anybody. Sometimes they're necessary. Again, Measure H was very much needed, and I supported that as well.
Thank you. A question to you, Mrs. Vieira. Let's talk about the city manager position. Mr. Petro will end his service shortly as Atwater City Manager. What specifically will you, as a council member, what specifically are you looking for in a city manager? Are you looking for someone from within the organization, somebody from within Merced County, somebody from within the state, and are there any specific traits you're looking for in a city manager?
First of all, I do want to say thank you to Mr. Petro, that he stepped in and took us through one of our most difficult times and saw us through that, so thank you very much for your service. Number two, city manager is an extremely important position. Everybody has to answer to that person, so I think this is going to be one of the most important, one of the most important first moves that we make if it moves forward into our term. We definitely need someone that has an absolute proven record of balancing budgets. They have to have a financial background, and not a first-timer, someone with that very strong balancing budgets. I don't care if they're local, far away, I don't care if we have to travel across the United States to get them and recruit them and bring them here, but part of our job is going to be to go out and seek them and find them, and tell them what a beautiful city we have, and what a great asset they would be to our community.
Thank you. Mr. Bergman.
I'd like to also echo the sentiments to Mr., about Mr. Petro. In the last four years, he's become the brother I've never had. He's a tremendous man, tremendous heart, and has done immeasurable amounts of good for this city, and he's pulled us through issues that nobody thought we'd get pulled through. I encourage everybody to apply, but honestly, I think that it's time we bring in some fresh ideas from the outside. Wherefrom? I don't care whether it's next town, the next state, it makes no difference to me. They have to have a strong background in the main areas of city government. They need finance, knowledge in finance, community development. Another big thing they need to have, in my opinion, is a lot of knowledge in law enforcement, because I fully expect the next city manager to hire a permanent police chief. And so they need to know a little bit about law enforcement to be able to make the proper decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Creighton.
Our new city manager, what I think the city needs for a new city manager, we need a seasoned professional with a background and experience to come into Atwater and help us chart a new course to prosperity and success. Someone who understands the issues Atwater faces today and into the future. Someone who has a strong background in finance and government budgeting. Someone with the understanding and experience that can assist private development in creating new jobs and additional commercial development for Atwater. Someone who demands quality customer service. A city manager that is engaged in our community, a leader who is, who actively participates and is hands-on, someone who cares about truly making Atwater a great place to live.
Great. Thank you. Now we'll move to Mr. Bergman. The voters of this city helped save police and fire by passing a half-cent sales tax a couple of years ago, Measure H. To date, it appears that 91% of the sales tax proceeds have gone to the Atwater Police Department, and 9% or 10% to Cal Fire Contract. Do you think this is fair?
Well, we had to prioritize the problems in this city. In 2006, 2007, Atwater City Police Department had 36 officers. When I was a-
2011, 2012, we were down to 24 on the books, with 22 on the streets due to injuries and that. 22 officers. Through Measure H, we were able to bring, increase that by 50%. So it did a tremendous good. Yes, police got a big share of that, but the city needed it. Crime continued to grow during that time, the officers, number of officers didn't. So that was a priority at the time. Unfortunately, we've lost a few officers due to retirement injury, we're down a little bit, but we are actively recruiting. On the fire side, we've kind of held status quo. The numbers were, the numbers are the same now as they were in 2006, 2007. However, the calls are increasing. So we need to increase staffing on the fire department as well, so I think in the near future, we do need to increase the funding for fire.
Thank you. Mr. Creighton.
Measure H, is it fair that we spent over 90% in PD versus fire department? When the city's facing bankruptcy and going through economic struggles like we are, I think everything's fair. Is it what we wanted as voters for that half-cent sales tax? Probably not. We want the best. We wanted 50/50 is what we thought we were going to get. But life's not always fair, and we have to do what we have to do to keep the city running, and we have to always put the city first. And I think the city manager and the people that be, did that, and they continue to do that. We've generated $1.2 million annually for over $3 million since it first implemented. Fires received less than 8% of that. We've spent two payments for $87,965, two consecutive years, with a $50,000 down payment. Fire does a lot of, a lot of calls every year. They have over 3,500 calls for service each year. We've only had 25 structured fires, but with that new truck that we've had, we have the large expense for that. That truck's being used, and we're drawing in potentially new development. There's hotels that are looking at Atwater to come in, and with development, we need the insurance rating to be in the right spot, so people can do business with us.
I apologize, I forgot to set the timer, so.
That's okay. I'll cut it short. Statistics on a PD, I think that, like Larry said, we've had 38 officers back in our heyday. I think we're down now to 27, three are out for different reasons. Crime's down, so PD's doing a really good job. There's a crimes unit out there, the detectives are following up. Our detectives are probably the best detectives out there.
I think your minutes, your minutes probably have, once you just wrap it up.
The attitude in the police department is what we want to continue citywide, positive and customer service.
I apologize for that, Paul.
I won't go too long next time.
Ms. Vieira.
I do agree with Mr. Creighton that our detectives in this city are top-notch. And quite good-looking, I'm sorry I had to add that. It's not, it's not a matter of what's fair. When Measure H came in, it came in at a time when we were really desperate for all of our public safety, and it can never be fair. It can never be fair. We had to plug the biggest holes in the ship, and I think that the committee did a really good job in doing that. I know that the fire department needed the new truck, and maybe the truck didn't cost as much as what we're spending, but it was a need and it was fulfilled. We all need the officers on the streets, not only for our safety, but for their safety, and I feel very strongly about that, since every single night, one of my officers is on the street, and so as a mom and a wife, you worry about that. It's never going to be fair, but we do the best we can, you know, as a community and as a city council.
Thank you. And I think it probably should be noted that the fire department did get a million-dollar asset there, and the city was smart enough to stretch those payments out for the years. So now we're going to move back to Mr. Creighton. What is your highest priority if elected, and why?
Probably the highest priority, if elected, would be the selection of a new city manager. Why that is, is because the head of, the CEO of our city needs to set the tone and the direction, so that we can climb out of where we're at. We've already got great staff, we have a great community, people care. Atwater's best days are ahead of us. The potential to grow is unprecedented. Turlock's growing right now, Merced's doing a little bit. We have a brand-new interchange, we have aggressive, aggressive growth ahead of us with some really dynamic things. We've got the Ferrari Ranch project coming in. We need a city manager that's going to step up and help guide that project through, and connect Highway 99 to Santa Fe, that'll spur new development, and also maintain our finances in a sound manner.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Vieira.
Paul stole my speech. I agree with him that our number-one priority is going to be with a city manager, but not any city manager, we have to be so specific, and I think it's going to be a little more than just waiting for someone to come to us. We're going to have to go and seek this person and find the absolute right person. We're at a turning point, and if we make the wrong turn here, I think it can be devastating. When our base closed back in 95, we also saw huge economic losses, and Atwater recovered. And we did, because of our citizens and the good people that live here, and our strength and our determination, we'll do it again. We need the right leader, and I want to be a part of going out and helping find that person. Someone who has the proven history of balancing budgets, and can look and see the bright future that we all see and hope for.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bergman.
Thank you. Again, I think one of our top priorities is to continue building our public safety. If citizens don't feel safe in a city, they're not going to stay. We need to bolster our law enforcement, we need to bolster our fire, we need our citizens to feel safe in this city. Many don't. So getting public safety built up, and that's what the citizens are going to feel more comfortable with, and I think that's a high priority. Obviously, getting rid of this deficit. We've made a good start in the last four years. We've gotten rid of over half the general fund deficit. We do have a ways to go, but there's, there's plans in place. We've made the cuts we need to, to get rid of that deficit. That's, that's huge. That affects our credit rating, our ability to get loans, and many other things, so we have to get rid of that. Another one is community development. We need, we need to invite industry and, and other things into the city to bolster our tax base, which will help get rid of our deficit, and make things better for our citizens, so they don't have to drive to Modesto, to Fresno, to get what they want. We need to build Atwater, so we have those opportunities here.
Thank you. A question for Mrs. Vieira. In 2013, to spur home building, the Atwater City Council reduced building fees. Clearly, the program has worked, as the last four years have produced 176 new homes here in Atwater. The prior four years, only five houses or building permits were pulled. Critics of the reduction say that the city has given away a half a million dollars in building fees. What is your position? As this, this has now expired in the city of Atwater, what is your position? Should we re-implement it, or are you against it?
First of all, I do understand kind of both sides of the argument, but we really have to take a look at, if we hadn't reduced those fees, would we have built those 175 homes? Those 175 homes are paying an additional tax each year that helps support our fire and police department, so as the city grew, they did take on the encumbrance of that debt. It, lost my whole train of thought, just like letting the dogs out of the kennel.
So you're in favor of continuing?
You know, Andy, I'm not necessarily against it or in favor. I think we need to take a one-by-one basis on this and see when it comes, you know, is it, is it an area that needs to be built out, or is it an area that's just sitting there, an open lot, you know, for crime and tagging and bringing our city down? So I think every time that the opportunity comes, we need to move forward, but it should be looked at on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. Mr. Bergman.
Thank you. Yeah, I was very proud to have both, helped sponsor and support this, this program. It's done tremendous, and I'm sure many of you out there have benefited from it. Over the last three years, we've had a total of 185 permits pulled. I talked to many of the developers, and they said, "Had this program not come into place, they would have not built in Atwater." So we have critics out there saying, "Well, you're giving money away." Really, if we hadn't have made the reductions, they wouldn't have come. So we gave away a little bit, but look what we're getting in return. So I was very, very proud of it, and it did, it did what we wanted it to do. As far as the future, I think it needs to be a case-by-case basis. We need to see what, what the developers want to do, and, and where they want to head, and just take it one at a time. It's, it's done very well. What we're looking at now is possibly going to the, to the, oh, I let, the dogs got out of my kennel, too. We want to look more on the industry side and see if we can do, maybe, maybe do some cut credits for them to help bring in some of that industry as well.
Thank you. Mr. Creighton.
Yeah, I better cage him. The building fee reduction program, it's my understanding that the building fee reduction program was put into place to spur new development. There's an argument that the city must continue that program, and there's an argument that the city must halt that program. I've spoken to both sides of the argument, and frankly, neither side has been able to articulate continued benefit or elimination of this program. We need real data that will resolve this issue. We need data that clearly shows its benefit or its lack of benefit to the city of Atwater. At the end of the day, I will only support what is best for the city of Atwater.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to ask one more question, then if folks in the audience want to ask a question, let me ask that you maybe have a seat back here. We're going to ask this next question, starting with you, Mr. Bergman. The city has been having severe financial problems since the State Controller's Office issued warnings as far back as 2008. Previous to that, Atwater's Fitch Bond Rating has gone from A to BB. With a $3 million deficit looming, what are your thoughts on fixing that budget deficit?
Well, as of the last audited numbers, the, our deficit is 3.6 million. As I stated, we're, it's going to take another month or so before we get it, get our audited numbers for the 15, 16 calendar year, but right now, it looks like we have an $8,000, $800,000 surplus. So having said that, it looks like if our numbers hold true, we will be under $3 million by the, by the end of this audited, this fiscal year and audited budget, which is great. That's, cut it in less than half than it was four years ago. We've, we put several issues into, several things into, into the works. We've cut budgets, we've reduced unnecessary spending, and it's working. And if we stay on that plan and continue it out, we'll, we'll get to where we want to go, and it's, it's within reach. We've cut budgets about as far as we can cut. We've cut budgets about as far as we can cut. And I'm sure the citizens feel it. City Hall is only open four days a week. If you need to do something on Friday and you get your water shut off, you can't turn it on until Monday because nobody's here. So that's one of the things we need to do when we get the budget turned around. But we need to continue the program or the road we're on.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Mr. Creighton.
The $3 million deficit. The current city council can't solve the deficit without a plan. We've all heard for the past six years, Atwater's on the verge of going bankrupt. We've been through several city managers with no success in solving our financial problems. The way to solve anything is to have a plan. We need to first hire a professional city manager that understands and can help us set in place a plan for economic recovery. We then build on being creative and innovative on all fronts. The city council must run the city as a corporation that it is. We could no longer treat the city as our own charity or club that we can lend out to others. We must adopt balanced budgets, implement fiscal responsibility throughout all city departments. It's only with clarity and sound judgment that we can solve our $3 million deficit together.
Thank you. Ms. Vera.
I think that moving forward, I do agree, we definitely need a plan. So we're not just wandering around, losing our, our train of thought. So, so that, that is a good plan. Bringing in new, newest, a new city council will bring in fresh ideas. And so that's always something nice. Bringing in a new city manager is also going to kind of steer us in the right direction. And, and hopefully turn, turn things around. I know that we were on the brink of bankruptcy, that we seem to have kind of slightly come out of that and, and we are going in a forward motion. And again, like I said, the citizens and the council of the city, we have overcome this before and, and I agree. And I have faith that we'll do it again. I'd love to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And then it looks like we have Buffy wants to ask a question. And I caution all our folks who are going to ask questions, please make sure the question is not longer than their answer. So come on up Buffy. This is one of our affiliates, Buffy McDaniel.
Hello. We can all agree that we want to improve our community. And one of the areas that I have a concern with, and I know it has been expressed by other constituents, is the condition of our city parks and the publicly maintained areas. It's become an issue that they're overgrown and not well maintained. We're trying to bring in businesses and as they drive through and look at the community, we want to make sure we're presenting ourselves to the best that we can. I've contacted two council members to ask city staff to provide the data of what this, what it costs the city to maintain these areas. And to date, that information hasn't been provided. So my question is, there's, there's been no recourse or no, it's just kind of fallen to the wayside after this request has been presented to city staff. So my question is, what would you do if information, you requested information from city staff and it wasn't provided so that you can make an educated and informed decision to better improve our community? Thank you.
What would I do? I would, with our new city manager, I would hold he or her feet to the fire. And that, that problem wouldn't, won't happen. If a residence comes in and wants those facts, those figures, that information, we're going to provide it to you. But going back to what Buffy said, if our city looks dilapidated, ran down and just plain junky, then they're going to treat us that way. If we, if we have a clean, healthy, vibrant community, the parks are clean, the kids are playing on safe equipment, things are well maintained, everything's groomed, our streets are swept, people will do business here in this community. But getting back to what you said, what would I do? That won't happen if I'm elected.
Thank you. Mrs. Vera.
First of all, I want to say thank you for the question Buffy. And I do agree, we, when we drive through our community, there's a lot of, of unkept parks and just small areas within our neighborhood. I know that our, our Parks Department is, is on furlough, they're only working four days a week. So I don't know if there's something we can do there to, to maybe offset or, or put some of those people back full time. Again, a lot of what happens is kind of behind the curtain. So as normal citizens, we don't see it. That's why I'm here. I want to go behind that curtain, I want to see what can be done and what can be fixed. Also, follow-up is important in everything that we do, whether it be our job or sitting here on the city council. If you came to me and asked me a question and, and I didn't respond to you, then that, that would be shame on me. So I would make that commitment to you. If I were on the city council and you came to me, it may not happen right away because sometimes the information isn't obtained really quickly. But we would need to follow up and say, hey Buffy, working on it. We will get it to you.
Thank you. Mr. Bergman.
By the way, I have asked twice for those numbers and I haven't gotten them yet. You know, it's very tough. With the financial situation we're in, we had to make severe cuts. We don't have the staffing to keep up on the safety things that need to be done as far as small street repairs, street lights and such. We don't have the staffing right now to take care of the parks, which is sad. It's truly sad. We need beautiful parks and the kids need a place to play. We are, again, something else I've asked for and it's being generated now, we're looking at outsourcing. I think right now that would be the most cost effective and the best way to take care of this issue. It's cheaper than having our own employees and we'll, we'll get our parks back. Because like you said, they are deplorable. I've been on some of the baseball fields and you'll see a gopher hole. Kid steps in that, we're looking at severe injury. And that's something that we, we can't afford. And hopefully, we can get some numbers on our outsourcing and get it taken care of.
Thank you. And we have another question from the, one of our members, Phil May. Phil?
I'm curious, what do you see as the biggest problem or issue that the city of Atwater is facing that perhaps is flying under the radar or is not being discussed currently?
I think one of the things that I've noticed in coming to the council meeting is we have a very divided council right now. And we have to learn to work together as a team. And I just see, I just see that division, it's very apparent in, just to the public eye. So possibly what they need is a girl on the council to teach them all how to play nice.
Mr. Bergman.
City's facing a severe issue that hasn't been, gotten a whole lot of attention lately. And that is a CalPERS deficit. There's what's called a side fund. Back in '04 to '06, CalPERS was flush with money. So they told the cities and that, you don't have to make your contributions. We've got plenty, we're making good interest. We'll go ahead and, you know, let you, you know, have a ride this year. Well, the economy turned around. Now what does CalPERS do? We want our money back. So what we're looking at is a severe, severe payments that we're going to have to make to CalPERS that many people don't know about. There has been a plan come up. I wasn't satisfied with the plan. We're still looking at other options. The way it was set up, we're, the payment, had, had we gone with a plan that was brought forward, it would have been the same payment we made this year without it. But it's something we're going to need to look at. Because we're looking at sharp increases in our CalPERS funds. And it's something that's not talked about and we need to solve quickly.
Thank you. Mr., excuse me, Mr. Creighton.
I want to speak about customer service. Here in Atwater, customer service unfortunately doesn't exist anymore. We want customer service, we demand it, we expect it. When you come to do business at the city of Atwater, you should be treated with respect. You should be treated with dignity and you should have your answers answered in an appropriate amount of time. There's nothing more frustrating than as, as a citizen, when you come to city hall and you can't do business on Friday or you can't do business between normal business hours because they're, they've modified their hours. We as a city council need to resolve that. Get the, get city hall open back up five days a week and start serving our citizens. And that'll change things quite a bit. But that needs to be addressed, customer service.
Okay, thank you. I think we have another question from one of our Realtor members, Cory Billing. Cory?
Thank you, Mr. Kritik. Potential council members and council member. Currently, the city of Atwater does not participate in the League of California Cities. The League of California Cities also provides a lot of training to our manager, to our city councilmen on legislative issues and updates, as well as grant availabilities and updates on what other cities are doing and not doing. It is of current belief that it is not of value to participate in the League of California Cities. If elected, will you support and be a frontrunner in getting the city of Atwater to participate in this league?
If and when elected, I will participate in the League of California Cities. Most you probably don't understand or realize that the League of California Cities provides excellent training at no cost to our city if we participate and we're members. We send our city clerks to their, to the California League of Cities for training. We send our police chiefs, our public works directors and our city managers to the League of California Cities for training. The resources are unprecedented. At our fingertips, we're a member, but we don't participate. It's a shame. There's a convention coming up this October and I don't believe that any of us are going to be participating in it. So to answer your question, we will be engaged, we will use the resources to our advantage. And that's what we're going to do.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vera.
I do agree with Paul on that. Knowledge is power. And if this is a resource that we have, especially without an expense, we're silly not to take advantage of that. Again, what are we missing? There's probably so much there that we can learn and utilize within this challenge we have ahead of us. So I think that we should take every opportunity to be involved in this. There, there may be something we missed in a meeting that, that could help us locally, that could be an answer to one of our problems. So absolutely. Great question Cory.
Just clarification, I think there is like a nine or $10,000 expense, councilman. Mr. Bergman, you want to address that?
Yes, there is an expense to, to belong to the League of Cities. And it is quite an expense. And that is one of the decisions we made. It, it is, the, the training is invaluable. It is, it really is. Problem is, it gets down to numbers again. We are scrimping and saving everywhere, every way we can to pull the city out of the deficit we're in. That was one of the decisions we made. It was something we were able to cut. Do I want to get back to it? Absolutely, absolutely. As stated, the training is invaluable. But it's a matter of dollars and cents. It was one of the decisions we made to cut and hopefully, we can get back to it.
Okay, I think we kind of...
Can I respond to that please?
Go ahead. Quick?
I, I don't think it's something that we should have cut. Yes, it's an expense. But the, the opportunities and things that we miss out on are far greater. We need that help, we need to participate in that. And if we're going to cut, we need to cut things that are just critical.
Okay. All right, we're back to Mr. Bergman and we're going to have another question from one of our affiliate members, Poppy Ferris. Poppy?
Good morning. So my question is, given the really public displays of disrespect for our peace officers, first of all, do you sense that in our community? And if so, do you have a plan or a thought on how to kind of bridge this community to their police officers?
Yeah, it saddens me to see what's happening around this country with the respect to police officers. They do a job that 99% of this country is not willing to. There are certain areas in this city, yes, it's horrible. It's hor, it's deplorable, the way our officers are treated. Back several years ago, we used to do block, neighborhood block party type deals where we would go into some of these areas and we would interact with citizens. Once, you know, again, I, I take everything back to funding. But once we have the ability to do it, I think we need to start that again. Start going in some of these neighborhoods where the, the ideals of our police department are faltering a little bit and try and strengthen those. Get out there, let, let these, let these people know the value of good law enforcement and the respect they need.
Thank you. Mr. Creighton.
I think first off, to answer your question, there is a, a small percentage of people in the community that, that don't have respect for our law enforcement. And quite frankly, I don't have time for those people. They, they need to understand that we need to be a law and order city. And 99% of the people in Atwater support and love our police department. So by being a law and order city, we're not going to tolerate the mischievous behavior or any of the other crimes they want to commit or, or give us a hard time. Because 99% of us just want to go to work, make a living, come home and be safe. And these guys work their tail off for that. So as a council member, I'm going to be behind the police department 100%. And if you're a criminal in this town, you better start packing.
Thank you. Mrs. Vera.
So there's no secret, pure transparency of my love and devotion to our public safety. I think that we're somewhat fortunate in Atwater that we don't have the amount of hatred towards our law enforcement that there is in some cities. There, it's still there. And it's really scary. We just had a deputy shot three times last week with a, with a high powered rifle right here in Stan Slough County. And how scary is that? My sons worked side by side with that officer on many occasions. In fact, both of them have. We have to just stop it. Negativity breeds negativity. And I think that there have already been a lot of outreaches within our community where people have brought things to, to city hall to say, we appreciate the lone, the police officers, we appreciate it. And positivity and goodness, I think will also breed, will breed that and, you know, kind of spread that as well. I agree with Paul. If you're a criminal in, in this city, I think you need to start packing because we have a pretty good, we have a pretty good police force here.
Okay, we're, we're almost done, just a couple more questions. And we'll go back to you, Ms. Vera, for this next question. How much money have you raised and who's your biggest contributor?
I think to date, we have raised about $2,800. And most of my contributions have just been from local businesses, family members, people that I've heard of and never met. Joe and Susan Keller had given a fundraiser, just out of the blue, contacted me and said, we want to do this for you. I did have one large contribution from Williamson Company. And other than that, there's just been a lot of 50, 100. I've had people walk into my office and say, we want to support you. It's, it's really touching, so. I know I do need to raise more.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman.
Thank you. To this point, I have raised $6,733, the largest. And a lot of them are small donations. The largest one is from my brother-in-law Noah Williams for $1,000.
That's great.
Raised so far, $4,100. Largest contributor for $1,000 is For Goodness and For Goodness. And then multiple small individuals that makes the rest of it.
Okay. I want to just try to formulate one more question. For several years, the Board of Realtors in Merced advocated a no panhandling ordinance over the course of about six years. And finally, the city of Merced passed a panhandling ordinance. Not, not to take any way civil right away, but to not be able to step into traffic, to impede traffic of the city's, the right of way. And for a while, the city of Merced enforced it. And now they're not enforcing it. And as a Realtor, when you take new clients to the, to the streets, you know, and put them in your cars to show them the area, it doesn't look very well. And we're slowly starting to see an issue here. And by the way, next week at the mayor's deal, they're going to hear that question again because a lot of them have dropped the ball on that. My question to you is, if it continues to get bad here in Atwater, would you support such an ordinance, anti-panhandling ordinance? And Mr. Creighton?
Absolutely. There's nothing more frustrating. We, we all pay taxes, there's services, there's facilities for people that are in need, that need help. These are people that choose, the, the large majority of them, I don't want to say 100%, but there's a few individuals that I get hit up by when I go to the grocery store to do something. And I'm tired, I'm working all day. And then here I get hit up by panhandlers or I have friends from out of town come into town and it's bad enough the way the city looks, and then you get hit by panhandlers. I, I don't want to tolerate that. I'm, I'm tired, I'm fed up of being fed up. I'm, I'm tired, I'm fed up of being fed up, and I think if we just stand behind our law enforcement, we create the correct ordinances, we could eliminate this.
Thank you. Mrs. Viara?
Absolutely. I think it's a great ordinance. Um, I used to think that, um, some of these people really needed our help, but that's not what, that's not really the truth. They're out there. Um, I was approached by, a short story, a lady a couple of years ago at Home Depot, and anyway, it made me really sad, and I ended up writing her a check. And then, two weeks later, she came at me at Costco, and she didn't even recognize me, and I said, "How many people write you checks? Oh, my gosh, don't you remember me? No, no." And ever since then, now I'm thinking, "No, this is just a way of life for them," and it's very sad, but there are other opportunities. We all get up every day, we make a decision, we go to work. Um, no, it shouldn't be allowed, not only that, but it's not safe. Do you ever get out at Walgreens, have your three-year-old granddaughter with you, and have to walk by some of these people to go in the store? It's scary. It's scary, the world we live in, so absolutely, let's not allow that in our city.
Well, we've already taken some steps, uh, to deal with the homeless issue. Uh, we, they've started camp...
Go ahead.
Well, we said, "That's the quickest two minutes I've ever seen."
You're good.
Well, if you don't want me to answer, just tell me something.
No, no, I was sending.
Um, we, we've dealt with, we've, uh, passed some ordinances that deals with the homeless, camping and that, and panhandling is something that has been talked about already, and it's something that we do need to take care of. Uh, it is starting in the city. I was hit up last weekend, and so that's, that's something we don't need. That's an element that we need to jump, uh, jump on ahead of time, and hopefully, it will be coming to the council very soon to deal with it, so we can be proactive instead of reactive.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so I want to ask, uh, ask our association, well, let me just say this, um, I'm really impressed, and I think our, uh, association is probably impressed. I think no matter which you two wins, I think the city of Atwater wins. I think you're all great candidates, you seem to be well-informed, and I'm sorry that Mr. Hernandez decided not to show up. Would have loved to have heard his, uh, his thoughts, but he apparently, uh, didn't want to share them. So I'd like to do, uh, closing statements, and, uh, we'll give you a minute, and, uh, if you need a little more time, just, you know, don't take, uh, an hour, but, uh, wrap up your thoughts, and we'll start with you, Mr. Bergman, closing remarks. But before that, how about a round of applause for our candidates?
Thank you for the opportunity. I've been very honored to serve for the last four years, and today, and many times, we hear that council hasn't done anything the last four years. We've reduced a terrible deficit by half. We've taken several steps, and, and I hear, "Well, we need to pay for this, we need to pay for that." Until you are faced with making these tough decisions, it's easy to say. We've tried to take the best, the best road we could for the citizens of Atwater. Hasn't happened as quickly as we want? No, it hasn't, but we're working hard, and there are tough decisions that need to be made, and it's, you know, it is easy to say, "Well, we need to do this, we need to do that." When the funding isn't there, it's, it's a very different situation. Uh, as I stated, I'm very proud and honored to serve the last four years. I do like to finish what I started. We made a good start, starting four years ago, and I, I'd like to see this through, and I would truly really appreciate your support. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Mr. Creighton?
I'm Paul Creighton, candidate for Atwater City Council. As a small business owner, I know firsthand the high fees and regulations that hurt our economy in Atwater. It's time we remove the red tape that harms our economy, and we must create a positive and friendly work environment between development and local government. As your city council member, I will fight to repair our roads, save our parks, stop deficit spending, and restore customer service back to city hall. I will be tough on crime and work to make our city safe again by supporting our local police and making sure they have the resources needed to keep us safe. Andy and the Board of Realtors, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to participate today, it's been a great experience.
Thank you. Ms. Viara?
Thirty-five years ago, uh, my husband and I met here at Atwater High School. Poppy's smiling because it only seems like twenty years ago, it couldn't be that old. We raised our family here in Atwater, and I love this city, this is my city. Um, everything that was said here today between Paul, between Larry, there, there isn't anybody here that doesn't love our city, and I'm really sad that, that there aren't three, um, chairs available, because I think all of us have a lot of, um, a lot of hope and a lot of vision for our city. Unfortunately, there's only two. Um, and, and seeing the three of us up here, and I know that there is a fourth, I haven't yet to meet him, but, um, I would be in hopes that there would be people lined out the door to run for city council. Um, we need change, and we need participation, um, to help, uh, see the vision, and I think all of us up here have a lot of the same visions with our city manager and the deficit. Um, I would be really honored to be one of the people selected to sit up here and to represent you, to, to see this forward, and to hopefully bring us back to better times. Andy, and thank you for the Merced Board of Realtors.
Thank you, and on behalf of, uh, our president, Skip Hinman, want to thank you for participating, and hope, uh, everybody got something out of it. Thank you again. (applause)